Yeah, I think they had a couple cases over there. Isolated.
Can't tell those, see if you're reflecting from the other one. Yeah, there you go.
The microphones don't appear to be working?
We cannot hear Dade City if you're speaking. That microphone seems to be cutting in and out for some reason, Eric.
Todd, can you hear me?
I can hear you at the podium.
I can hear you at the podium, but I cannot hear Mr. Gray. Try it now.
Hear me now?
Nope. I can, I can hear you say, can you hear me now, but it's extremely low. Eric, check the connection underneath, or maybe one of the other gentlemen can try his, giving them his microphone for a minute? Very low. I think I'm picking you up off the podium microphone.
Todd, can you hear me? Over.
Say it one more time?
Todd, can you hear me? Testing once.
I can hear you now, when you get really close to it.
You don't have another microphone?
No, that was too low. There's a wireless mic sitting down where you sit, Eric. See if that works. I believe it's in a zipper bag.
Yeah, can we move down one? Does, does my mic, does my mic work?
Yes, your mic is working. So if you guys, yeah, if you want to move down one? Whoever said move down one, if you could move to the left of Chris Williams instead, then you're on camera because we have it zoomed to just the four of you.
I can do.
Well, the chair between Chris Williams and the other gentleman.
No, you're good, Peter. Chris just needs to move there. Thank you. Guys dancing down there.
All right. Now we can hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, sir.
All right. Now that everybody's in communication, like to call the meeting into order, the Hybrid Virtual Planning Commission Meeting of September 3rd, 2020. Like to remind everyone, please silence all electronic devices and those who are attending virtually mute your microphones when not speaking. At this time, like to stand for a moment of silence and the Pledge of Allegiance. My pledge allegiance is the life of the United States of America. To be the republic for which it stands, one nation, without doubt, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, Madam Clark, would you like to read the roll call, please?
Jamie Gerardi. Michael Cox.
Here.
Peter Hansel.
Here.
Bertosize. Christopher Poole. Chris Williams. Charles Gray.
Jamie Gerardi is online. I don't know why he didn't say here.
I'm sorry, I am here, yes.
Okay, gotcha. All right, there you are. All right, gotcha. All right. So the Planning Commission is appointed by the Board of County Commissioners and we meet twice a month. Planning Commission serves as the local planning agency and the Planning Commission holds public hearings and transmits to the Board of County Commissioners recommendations on comprehensive plan amendments, land development code amendments, rezonings, and conditional use requests. Planning Commission is the final decision-making body for special exceptions, certain appeals, variance requests, and certain alternative standard requests. However, final decisions may be appealed to the Board of County Commissioners. If anyone is in opposition to the Comprehensive Plan Amendment, Land Development Code Amendment, rezoning, conditional use, or any item where the Planning Commission transmits a recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners, it's important that you attend the appropriate Board of County Commissioner meeting. I think we have one set of minutes for approval. Do I have a motion?
As Jamie Gerardi, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of July 23rd, 2020.
Second.
Your motion and?
Chris Williams, second.
Chris Williams, second. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye. Roll call.
Jamie Gerardi.
Aye.
Michael Cox.
Aye.
Peter Hansel.
Aye.
Christopher Poole.
Aye.
Chris Williams.
Aye.
Chairman Charles Gray.
Aye.
Okay, this is the public comment section. Denise, do we have anything registered for public comment? It's not on the agenda.
Let me check with the kiosk. Is anyone here, okay, no comments. I've been being told by the kiosk, no one there for a public comment on an item that is not on the agenda today. We do have public comments for items that are on the agenda today, but not for this part of the meeting. Thank you.
The public, participants attending through the public comment kiosk and WebEx participants, including the applicants who have pre-registered for the Hybrid Virtual Planning Commission Meeting, will be notified by the county staff when they are permitted to speak. Applicants' vote will be limited to five minutes and other participants will be limited to three minutes, unless additional time has been approved at least 24 hours in advance of the meeting. I think we have one request that was approved.
You have one request for additional time, 10 minutes for item P10.
The participants attending through the public comment kiosk and WebEx participants must announce the following items before speaking, and at the time they will be sworn by the clerk. Their name, their address, their agenda item, or the agenda item title. Then, your three to five minute period will start. After public comment, kiosk and WebEx participants will read into the public record comments, documents, PowerPoints, or videos that have been identified by members of the public to be read out loud or played at the meeting, limited to five or three minutes as required. So today we have nine public hearing items on the consent agenda. These items will be approved by roll call vote, unless the item is pulled from the consent. Once a motion is made on the consent agenda, the Planning Commission member who makes the motion will state his name, the Planning Commission member who seconds the motion will state his name, and the clerk will call the roll. All right, so Denise, are we ready? Want to do the advertisement?
Yes, the items were published in the Tampa Bay Times on August 19th, 2020, August 23rd, 2020, August 26th, 2020, or by affidavit of certified mailouts and site postings. Should we also do the swearing in?
Yeah, you're gonna, okay.
If anybody would like to speak on any of the items today, can you please raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give as a truth to help you, God? Thank you. All right. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm going to move on to, you have nine items on your consent agenda, and I'm going to go through those items. First item is PC1, PDD 20 CU 36. It's conditional use and operating permit Cypress Preserve 841 LLC for land excavation in an MPUD Master Plan Unit Development District. We're requesting a continuance to the September 17th, 2020 Planning Commission Meeting at 1:30 in Newport Ritchie.
Okay. Do I have a motion? Is the applicant present?
Applicant is virtually present.
All right. Is there anybody else to speak on that?
No one to speak on this item.
So the applicant has no comment. I'll hear a motion.
Motion to approve the continuance, Chris Poole.
Okay, you have a second?
I'll second it, Peter Hansel.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on the motion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Roll call.
Jamie Gerardi.
Aye.
Michael Cox.
Aye.
Peter Hansel.
Aye.
Christopher Poole.
Aye.
Chris Williams.
Aye.
Chairman Charles Gray.
Aye.
PC2 is PDD 20 7481. It's a zoning amendment, Sun Coast Retail Gun Highway and State Route 54 MPUD. Huntley Properties LLC. This is a rezoning request from an MPUD Master Plan Unit Development District, which has expired to a Master Plan Unit Development District to allow a maximum of 150,000 square feet of commercial retail on approximately 38.62 acres. Comes to you with a recommendation of approval with conditions as included in your packet.
All right, is the applicant present?
Applicant is virtually present.
Okay, is there anybody here to ask that be removed from consent?
No one is here to object. I've been told on the actual kiosk, there's no one there to object on the item.
Okay, then let's go to PC3.
PC3 is PDD 20 7494. It's a zoning amendment, Paul F. and Beverly A. Reinsmith. This is a change in zoning from an MPUD Master Plan Unit Development District, which has expired to an AR Agricultural Residential District. Comes to you with a recommendation of approval.
Is there an applicant present?
Applicant is virtually present.
Anyone here to object?
No one to object.
All right. Move to PC4.
PC4 is PDD 20 7495 in the name of Earl J. Bartholomew for a change in zoning from AR Agricultural Residential District, AC Agricultural District, and C2 General Commercial District to C2 General Commercial District. Comes to you with a recommendation of approval. And we're told that the applicant is present at the kiosk if you have any questions of the applicant.
All right. Is there anyone here to object?
No one to object.
Does the applicant have any comment? Otherwise, we'll ask for a motion.
No.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the, or no, let's go to the next one, I'm sorry.
What we'll do is we'll, if it's okay with you, we'll skip PC5 and we're, because there, there might be some talk about this one. So we're going to move on to PC6. We'll remove PC5 from consent. Item PC6 is PDD 20-7498X in the name of Brandon Ray Sotomayor. It's a zoning amendment for a change in zoning from AC Agricultural District to AR Agricultural Residential District. The applicant has also voluntarily agreed to record a deed restriction that just limits the site to a total of two lots. And this comes to you with a recommendation of approval.
All right, and the applicant's present?
The applicant is virtually present.
Okay, and anybody here to object?
No one to object.
Okay. Any comment or do I hear a motion? This is on consent, I'm sorry.
I'll move on to PC7. PC7 is PDD 20 2085. It's an alternative standard for Target Corporation Mitchell Rat Ranch. It's an alternative standard from the requirements of the Land Development Code, Section 406.1 signs, to increase the maximum allowable height of one monument signed from 11 feet to 20 feet in exchange for an overall reduction in the total signage on the property in a C2 General Commercial District. This comes to you with a recommendation of approval with conditions as contained in your packet.
Okay, this is also on consent?
On consent, and the applicant is virtually present, and no one here to object.
Okay. And then PC8?
PC8 is PDD 20 0737. It's a transportation corridor management variance for West Coast Collision Center. It's a reduction in the right-of-way dedication requirements from 71 feet to 62 feet from roadway center line along alternate US 19. Comes to you with a recommendation of approval with conditions as contained in your packet.
All right. The applicant present?
Applicant is virtually present, and we have no one to object.
Mr. Chairman, this is Jamie Gerardi. I do have one question on this one. I think I can ask and keep it on consent, but it's more of a general.
Um, okay. Go ahead, Jamie.
Is, is, has the county adopted new right-of-way width standards? I know we've gotten, this is the second time in three meetings, we've gotten a similar request here for reduction in the right-of-way dedication. Is 124 feet now the right-of-way for four-lane roads, or is it still 142 feet?
So I may be able to answer that question. The county has adopted new right-of-way cross-sections that do narrow the right-of-way, but it's only for county roadways. So DOT has not necessarily agreed to those widths for state roadways. So all of the alternative standards or variances you're seeing are on state roadways. So we have not changed the widths on state roadways yet.
Okay, so just to clarify then, if, if somebody has a project that's not on a state roadway and the, and the right-of-way preservation table say 142 feet, they don't need to come for an alternative standard? They can just use the new cross-section?
There is an alternative standard required, but it's administratively approved. It doesn't come to the Planning Commission.
Okay, is, is there any discussion to get rid of that? It just seems like, and then it's outside.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. The answer is yes, but it requires us to amend our tables and our comprehensive plan. The issue is that we haven't yet amended the comprehensive plan tables. So I know staff is working on those amendments to make the comprehensive plan tables consistent with the new cross-sections, but they have not yet done that. So we've tried to simplify the process to have the new cross-sections approved by allowing them to be administratively approved. But that's really the best we can do until the comp plan is amended.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
All right, so that remains on consent. And then the last one, PC9?
PC9 is PDD 20 0738. This is large-scale comprehensive plan amendment, CPAL, and on this one, you're, you're sitting as a local planning agency, I should say. CPAL 20 09 Trinity Corporate Center, providing for a large-scale comprehensive plan amendment to the future land use maps 2-15 and Sheet 19, changing from IL industrial light to PD plan development and approximately 65 acres of real property and a text amendment creating sub-area policy, future land use 7.1.55. Trinity Corporate Center and map amendment to the future land use map 2-9, adding sub-area map 2-9 55 Trinity Corporate Center. On this one, as I stated, you're sitting as a local planning agency, so the recommendation is that you find it consistent with the comprehensive plan and you recommend approval to the Board of County Commissioners. I do want to say that Mr. Jamie Gerardi is recusing from voting him, voting on this item. And additionally, there was an incorrect note on your agenda memo. It should be in Commission District 3.
Mr. Chair, since Mr. Gerardi is abstaining, you probably need a separate motion on PC9 from the rest of the consent agenda.
All right, so so that remains on consent. And do I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended? And noting the, you know, the comments relative to this by Jamie Gerardi and his recusal on PC9.
I'll make a motion, Chris Poole, to approve the consent agenda consisting of PC2, PC3, PC4, PC6, PC7, and PC8.
And PC9?
PC9?
We'll do that one separately.
That one separately, please.
Okay.
Because Mr. Gerardi can't vote on the motion unless you do it separately.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Peter Hansel, second.
All right, all in favor of the motion, signify by roll call.
Jamie Gerardi.
Aye.
Michael Cox.
Aye.
Peter Hansel.
Aye.
Bert, sorry, Christopher, Christopher Poole.
Aye.
Chris Williams.
Aye.
And Chairman Charles Gray.
Aye.
Okay. So we're gonna, we want to go back to five or nine?
Do the, do the roll call vote for nine or a motion for nine, and then we'll back, go back to five.
All right.
Mr., this is Michael Cox, approve on PC9.
Okay, so we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Peter Hansel, second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Further discussion on the motion? All in favor by roll call?
Michael Cox.
Aye.
Peter Hansel.
Aye.
Christopher Poole.
Aye.
Chris Williams.
Aye.
Chairman Charles Gray.
Aye.
All right, so we'll move on to item PC5. PC5 is PDD 20 7497. It's a zoning amendment for Martin F. and Donna L. Albach. It's a change in zoning from an AR Agricultural Residential District to RMH Mobile Home District with deed restrictions that limit the uses on the location to site-built homes only and limit the number of lots to a total of 100. On this item, it does come to you with a recommendation of approval as it's in your packet. However, we've had some discussions internally and have found some information that we are requesting a continuance to the October 8th, 2020 Planning Commission Meeting at 1:30 PM in Dade City. I would like for the applicant to have the opportunity as to whether the applicant agrees or disagrees with this continuance, but that is the request from the Planning and Development Department that the item be continued to October 8th, 2020 at 1:30 PM in Dade City.
Okay, so if the applicant's present, we're?
Applicant is virtually present.
Okay, we'd like to hear from him.
Good afternoon, members. Mr. Chairman and members, I'm Cindy Terrapani with Terrapani Planning Strategies. I am the authorized agent for the property owner, Mr. and Mrs. Albach. We have received the staff approval, recommendation for approval last week on August 28th. So we were quite surprised to get an email Tuesday evening that this county wanted to request a continuance. We find, believe that it's regretful that the staff didn't identify these concerns earlier, so we can be working on them. But we will agree to a one-month continuance to the October 8th public hearing, so that we can discuss these issues further with the staff.
Okay, and is that what the staff's requesting?
October 8th, just one-month continuance, October 8th, 2020 at 1:30 in Dade City.
All right.
Hybrid virtual, possibly.
All right, is there anyone present to object?
No one here is, and no one is here in opposition.
Move to continue to PC5 to October 8th.
Okay.
Peter Hansel, second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I got a quick question on this, just for clarification.
Yeah.
I, I don't know if this is the appropriate time to ask or if we should wait till the next meeting or the continued meeting, but zoning classification for this being RMH and land uses Res 9 for the area. I'm just curious, I know we've had this discussion before about why RMH would be preferred over Res 9. Should we handle that later?
We can, we can handle that later, but we can touch up on it right now if you'd like. RMH, what the applicant's requesting is the lot width, 40-foot wide lots. The area is surrounded by RMH zoning, so there's, according to your packet, there's RMH to the north, and there's also RMH to the west, so that those lot sizes have existed there, and they are limiting their density to the comp plan, so.
Okay, yeah, I guess my question is just that future land use all around there, it looks like it's Res 9, is this the future land use?
Yeah, the density that they're requesting is within the Res 9 classification.
Anything else? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we have clarified, then I think we, did we have a motion? Do you have a second? So all in favor of the motion, by roll call?
Jamie Gerardi.
Aye.
Michael Cox.
Aye.
Peter Hansel.
Aye.
Christopher Poole.
Aye.
Chris Williams.
Aye.
Chairman Charles Gray.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, on the following item, before we get into the item, like to take care of a few housekeeping items. Item P10, there were some, some email, a good amount of emails, probably 50 or so emails put together in a packet. It's been sent to the clerk's office. We want to see if we can have a motion to receive and file those, please.
Do we have a motion, please? Do we have a motion to receive and file?
Motion to receive and file.
Michael Cox.
Michael Cox, second?
Yes, sir.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Jamie Gerardi.
Aye.
Michael Cox.
Aye.
Peter Hansel.
Aye.
Christopher Poole.
Aye.
Chris Williams.
Aye.
Chairman Charles Gray.
Aye.
Okay, and Erica Wenland is going to do the presentation on that one, so I'm going to share my screen so that we can all see this.
You are now acting as the local planning agency. Erica Wenland, Planning and Development. Item P10 PG 20 0277, proposed large-scale comprehensive plan amendment, CPAL 20 06 I-75 Lantern. The positioner is proposing a larger comprehensive plan amendment to change the future land use definitions of EC Employment Center and AG Agricultural to IL Industrial Light and Comm Commercial on approximately 90.09 acres, located at the northeast corner of I-75 Lantern Road Interchange, extending northerly along I-75 to the county line to allow for commercial and industrial uses. The subject property is located in the market area, and since it's going to industrial light, there will be a limitation on the industrial uses adjacent to residential areas. As you can see, the subject property hugs I-75 interchange on the As you can see, the subject property hugs I-75 interchange on the east side and it's adjacent south of Hernando County. Here's the existing zoning districts of AC, AR, and C2. A companion rezoning petition has been submitted, but dates have not been submitted yet. Or have not been submitted yet. Here you can see the proposed future land uses of IL, that gray color, and then at the bottom is that commercial, that like teal-blue color right at the bottom. And with that, Planning and Development recommends the local planning agency find the amendment consistent with the comprehensive plan and approve to the Board of County Commissioners. Thank you.
All right.
Yes, we have three people at the public comic kiosk to speak on this item. And the applicant has requested additional time.
Okay, would the applicant like to go first or with all their time?
Hi, this is Barbara Willhite. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you very much, Planning Commission members. I have my team on WebEx as well. Larry Guilford, representing the property, a property owner, as well as Mike Razor, Transportation Consultant. We want to go through, because of the, the public interest in this, we want to make sure we go through and explain it in a little more detail if we could. Larry Guilford would like to address you first.
Barbara, can, can you, before anybody speaks, can you have them confirm then whether they were sworn or not, including you?
Yes, I have been sworn. And Larry, would you go ahead? Larry Guilford?
Think I got it. Can I be, can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, great. My name is Larry Guilford. I live at one, and I have been sworn in. Question, I was sworn, I was here for the swearing in. My name is Larry Guilford. I live at 12238 Tradition Drive, Dade City, Florida, 33525, which is 5.43 miles from the property. I've been a resident of Pasco County since 1977. I'm a former member of the Pasco County Planning Commission for eight years and a current member of the Pasco Metropolitan Planning Organization Citizen Advisory Committee. I'm speaking on behalf of the property. I have a beneficial interest in the property. The subject property was purchased because of its location on an interstate exit with one and a half miles of frontage on I-75 with excellent visibility both northbound and southbound on I-75. Our plan for the 14 acres of the, for 14 acres of the property will be for COM land use and C2 zoning is because of interstate type of businesses such as gas, food, hotel, also the possibility of an emergency center. And let me be perfectly clear, there is no plan for a truck stop on this property as been mentioned in various emails. I was clear about this at the community meeting and have agreed to a deed restriction prohibiting a truck stop that will be part of the rezoning of the property. The remainder of the property is for light industrial to encourage economic development along I-75. With that said, I would recognize my land use attorney Barbara Willhite and my traffic engineer, Mike Razor, who have additional information to provide to the Planning Commission. I request that the Planning Commission support the county staff's recommendation of approval of the proposed comprehensive plan amendment. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, I'm ready to proceed. I have a few things I want to give a perspective on to the Planning Commission before Mike Razor talks about transportation. I just wanted to point out, in 2006, it was Pasco County that put the employment designation on this property. That was done as a part of an extensive update to the comp plan that included a Citizens Advisory Committee and the Northeast Pasco Rural Group. So the decision to have a vision for this property for commercial and industrial uses was put there by Pasco County, and it was done at the same time as the rural area policies. The EC land use designation on the property allows commercial, light industrial, and certain heavy industrial uses at a maximum floor ratio of three, ratio of 3.0, that's 300%. It allows apartments and townhomes at a maximum density of 32 units per acre. The EC land use requires at least 7.6 acres to be developed as apartments or townhomes and allows a maximum of 38 acres of apartments and townhomes, which would be 480 units. This amendment and the proposed deed restriction will accomplish the following. Removes the requirement for multifamily development and prohibits residential uses whose residential uses aren't appropriate adjacent to the interstate and are not the best use of limited I-75 frontage that we have here in Pasco that remains undeveloped. It'll only allow light industrial uses and limit the maximum floor ratio to .50, which is 50%, opposed to 300%. Sets a specific area where commercial uses are allowed and limits the maximum lot coverage to 50% as opposed to 300%. We will prohibit a truck stop as indicated by Mr. Guilford, which is, which is consistent with what he told at the neighborhood meet, at the neighborhood meeting. So clean up the split land use designations on the property, because right now it's EC and AC, and provide for light industrial uses all along the property's frontage on I-75, which is more appropriate next to the interstate. Along the only parcel where there is an adjacent residential use, we're going to require there'd be a 25-foot setback that remains in its natural undisturbed condition. The property was cleared of trees, because it's, has an agriculture exemption for timber, but Mr. Guilford left trees along that adjacent residential property, the property that has a residential use on it, and he intends to, through this deed restriction, maintain that as an undisturbed buffer. This amendment is exactly in line with what we hear that the board's priorities are as well as the Pasco Economic Development Council's priorities. With that, I would like to see if Mike Razor can talk to you about transportation and, and we're not out there, because I know the residents have questions about that.
All right. Good afternoon. I'm Mike Razor with Razor Transportation Consulting at 19046 Bruski Downs Boulevard, number 308, Tampa, Florida, 33647. Speaking on Agenda Item P10, I'm a registered professional engineer with a specialty in traffic engineering. I have three years of experience. I have been sworn. I performed the various traffic studies for this project, including the transportation needs assessment performed in association with the subject comprehensive plan amendment. For the transportation needs assessment, which is based upon peak hour trips, a comparison between the current and proposed future land use categories was performed based on the County Land Development Code's reasonable yield formula, which identified that the comprehensive plan amendment would result in a decrease in potential trip generation for the site by 36 vehicles during the PM peak hour. Given the reference slight decrease in trip generation, the results of the transportation needs assessment identified virtually no change in traffic operating conditions between the existing and proposed future land use scenarios. The initial analysis was performed using the 2040 Long Range Transportation Plan as the baseline, which resulted in a finding of level service E conditions for Blanton Road for both future land use scenarios as compared to a level service D standard. However, with the updated traffic volume forecasts associated with the 2045 Long Range Transportation Plan, which reflect a reduction in projected traffic volumes for Blanton Road, Blanton Road is anticipated to operate at level service D conditions for both future land use scenarios, which meet the level service D standard. A timing and phasing analysis was also performed for the subject project, which evaluated traffic operating conditions for the study area, which included the project site driveway connection to Blanton Road, the adjacent segment of Blanton Road, and the intersections of the I-75 ramps of Blanton Road. The results of that analysis identified that adequate capacity exists to accommodate the subject project, assuming that maximum entitlements are developed, worst-case analysis, with the resulting traffic operating conditions meeting with transportation performance standards pursuant to the County's Land Development Code. The preliminary site access analysis for the subject project identified that turn lanes will be warranted on Blanton Road, the certain project, which will result in improving Blanton Road to standard conditions from approximately 300 feet east of the I-75 northbound on and off ramps to approximately 500 feet east of the site driveway connection, thereby providing for a county standard road continuously from I-75 to the project site driveway, noting that the predominant traffic pattern for the project will be to and from the interstate. We are aware of comments received from area residents regarding potential issues with the adjacent interstate ramps and specifically the off ramps. Those comments were in regard to both traffic operating conditions, which is capacity, and the design characteristics of the ramps. I've already addressed capacity, indicating that traffic operating conditions were found to meet the county's transportation performance standards, again, assuming that maximum entitlements are developed. In regard to design characteristics, comments were received questioning the design of the interchange in regard to exit lane tapers, curbs, the ability to accommodate truck traffic, and overall safety in general. In response to the foregoing, I reached out to FDOT's Brooksville Operations Office, which has jurisdiction over this particular interchange. FDOT staff indicated they were unaware of any operational or safety issues with the interchange. In addition, I have reviewed the most recent five years of crash data available for the interchange as provided by FDOT, which spanned the years from 2014 through 2018. That review did not identify any red flags indicative of an operational or safety issue. I also performed a field review of interchange and found that there is signage in advance of the interchange at one mile, one-half mile, and just before the ramps in each approaching direction along I-75 with advisory speed signs and other advanced warning traffic control signage. There was clear sight distance available at the intersections of the ramps with Blanton Road. The results of the field review corroborated the results of the crash date evaluation and the statement by FDOT staff indicating a lack of operational and safety issue. Thank you, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may.
All right, thank you. Barbara, anything further? Your mic's off, Barbara. Can't hear you.
Somebody turned, your team turned me off. That's all we have for our presentation. We look forward to hearing from, from public comments, and we can be available to answer questions and provide rebuttal as necessary.
All right, thank you. Anything, David? David, did you have anything?
Oh, I'm good. Thank you.
Yeah, we'll, we'll now take the comments at the kiosk.
Okay.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yep, yep, hear you.
Okay, my name is Judy Geiger. I live at 16225 Bellamy Brothers Boulevard, Dade City, Florida, 33523. I do own the property in the northeast Pasco rural area. My main concern is the road issue. The I-75 Blanton Road, exit 293 is not a very short off-ramp and on-ramp. If they go from 100 cars per day to over 1,500 cars per day, it's just not going to handle it. The other thing that has not been discussed is the, there's a northeast Pasco multimodal safety action plan for the bicycles, and this road was part of that plan. The other thing is that we, this is a scenic road in the Land Development Code 604.4B1. The big concern I've got, I have not seen any opinion from the Florida Department of Transportation about the additional traffic that is planned to be on this road if this is approved. If you look at State Road 52 with the flying J, how many times in the past 20 years have they redone that road just because of the traffic? And there really isn't much else down there yet. It's coming. You look at State Road 50, exit 301, that's another one that's had to be redone because of traffic. That doesn't even take in consideration 54 and 56. Again, the road issue is, is a big concern to me. In addition to that, they're talking about job creation. If this goes into a commercial gas station, 7-Eleven-type situation, that's not the jobs we want. The employment center would bring white-collar jobs. People would live there. I think that's a better use of the land. The final thing, this is in the northeast Pasco rural area. We as the citizens, the staff, our elected officials, spend a lot of time putting this in place to protect and preserve our rural area. That needs to be considered. This is going from AC to industrial light is not preserving the rural area. Thank you.
Ms. Geiger?
Yes, sir.
I don't think anybody asked if you'd been sworn, have you?
Oh, yes, sir, I was sworn. I forgot to say that.
And we're referring to Agenda Item Number 10, right?
Yes, PC 10, P10, yeah.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, who's next?
Hello, I'm Nancy Hazelwood, 34110, a nice place. I want to speak to P10, and I have been sworn. I appreciate Barbara Willhite and Mr. Guilford for putting a restriction on a truck stop. That's great. We still have a few problems with it. The act component to this application is in, as Judy was saying, is in the Northeast Rural Area Plan. So let me give you some history. In 2005 and '06, the county was approving Pasadena Hills for 40,000 units. We were horrified when this happened. The county hired Gladden Jackson to work on the Pasadena Hills and our area. They said that if we went into a protected area, we needed to not object to Pasadena Hills, so we didn't. If this is changed to commercial, the act part, it'll be back to the regular comp plan in spite of the community continually asking for commercial ordinance. We don't have one. The state even mandated that a commercial ordinance should be put in the Northeast Rural Area Plan. And I believe it's set within a year of the ordinance of our plan being put together. I suggest that an act plan, part of this be denied or a condition put on the application that whoever owns the property at the time will have to comply with the rural area ordinance when it is written. The application, the applicant did have a neighborhood pact meeting. We suggested many ways that the development of the project might fit in with the Northeast Rural Area Plan. Some of the suggestions were easily done and not expensive, like putting rural fencing up, something that makes it look rural. I guess everything was ejected. I haven't heard anything to that part of what happened. If the act were revert back to the regular comp plan by becoming commercial, I actually considering, consider this taking from the citizens that live and approve the Northeast Rural Area Plan. So how does Pasco County make it right for the Pasco County citizens you're taking from us again from the Northeast Rural Area Plan? Maybe if we could go to Pasadena Hills and take back some of the act land there and put it in the Northeast Rural Area Plan. One other point, the applicant bought this property recently and would have known that it was in the Northeast Rural Area Plan. The applicant figured our rural area plan wouldn't stand up. Is he right? Is our plan not standing up to any of this? I appreciate your kind attention. Thank you all.
Is there another person at the kiosk?
Yes, there is.
Thank you.
State your name and address and tell us if you've been sworn, and I, I assume you're here to speak about.
Yeah, my name is Edward Ducoitz. I live at 32710 Blueberry Hillway, Dade City, Florida, 33523. My property borders, the property are pushed. I have been sworn. I am under oath. I'm here commenting. There are three reasons, by the way, I filed a brief on this matter a couple of weeks ago, and I refiled it again last week. So it shouldn't be part of your record. I'll refer to it. There are three reasons why the application- There are three reasons why the application for zoning change, that the property issue should be denied. First, such rezoning is spot zoning. Spot zoning is the zoning of one parcel, contrary to nearby lands on the zoning plan. Spot zoning is a zoning designation of one parcel of land to allow a zoning that is incompatible both with the zoning and most of the lands nearby and with the zoning master plan to accommodate a preferred use by an owner for another person with an interest, a period of interest in the parcel. Spot zoning is forbidden under both state planning and zoning laws, monkey to an arbitrary and complicit decision rather than a considered application of zoning law supported by the evidence. A spot zoning singles out of parcel of land, and it is invalid if it's not in accordance with the comprehensive zoning plan. I cite to often reported zoning rules, 105A2nd, 219 or 223, the 1954 case. Spot zoning works two ways. If you're zoning up, you're zoning down, and the courts have found it in the direction that is not consistent with the property allow. It's not acceptable. I cite to Rothie Miami, 94th South, 2nd, 168, which is a 1957 court's proof form case. Courts have also said a comprehensive land use plan legislatively sets zoning norm for each zone, and in order to avoid spot zoning changes, comes showing for the use of the individual parcels in the departmental plan, 650 South, 2nd, 182 or 186, 1995.
Okay, yes, sir, we've come to the end of your time period. Do you have?
No, he still, he still has one minute, sir. That was the one-minute warning.
Nice, but you know, your app.
The second reason to deny the application is it is inconsistent with Pasco County's comprehensive plan. Now, I don't know who reviewed this, but Pasco County has accepted or made special the northeast county, and in their future use plan, they say that this plan is to be maintained after rural nature. Third reason to deny the zoning change is that the zoning is incompatible. I refer to my Exhibit 7, which listed compatibility, and light industrial and commercial is not compatible with either residential or rural. Now, the county could have zoned this commercial at one time. They didn't, and so I ask that you reject.
Thank you very much. Okay, Barbara? Barbara, turn off your mute.
Thank you. I have to wait for staff to unmute me. Thank you very much. I appreciate the public comments. With regard to the last speaker, I would, I have read his information and would note that he is a registered patent attorney by his own, his own letter to the county, and I have read all of his assertions and the zoning and the land use. And the land use is the only thing here before you today is consistent with the comprehensive plan. It's, I think everybody seems to forget that it's already has an EC for most of the property has an EC land use designation on it. When you hear about converting ag to commercial, the current EC allows commercial, light industrial, heavy industrial uses. So I just wanted to, you know, to make you aware of that. Staff and their professional staff report has found this comp plan consistent with the comprehensive plan. One of the things that you hear is Blanton is a scenic road, and that's correct. If you look in the comprehensive plan and the Land Development Code, Blanton has been given special treatment as a scenic road. That doesn't mean you can't, that you can't develop on Blanton Road. If you look at the comp plan policy flu 2.1.10, you'll see that certain standards for land development are to be followed when you have, when you develop on a scenic road. The policy has been implemented by the Northeast Pasco Rural Protection Overlay District and Land Development Code. I mean, we will comply with those requirements, and as requested by, I think it was Ms. Hazelwood, we will be required to apply with any applicable amendments to that overlay district. The fact that you recommend approval of a comp plan amendment on this property and ultimately zoning will come back to you doesn't forego the ability of the county to adopt additional regulations to implement the northeast Pasco rural area. I hear the concern of the residents about not being a commercial, implementation of commercial standards, because mostly what you have in your Land Development Code are for residential projects. So I hear that concern of the founders I worked with in 2005 and 2006 when I was at the county, and I, and I hear that concern, and to address that concern, the county should move forward and, and adopt standards, and they'll apply to this property and any other property that they're applicable to. For example, rural fencing, you know, we can't start trying to write code policies into a comp plan or into a rezoning if there's a standards in the future that require a certain type of fencing or, or any other requirement. We'll meet those. I also, you know, want to point out that if you've read some of the emails, it's as though my client's property was viewed as a buffer to the residential use to the east, and, and although Mr. DuKowitz didn't mention it in his time that he had to speak to you, you know, he complains about that, those trees being removed on my client's property. Well, my client never purchased the property to be somebody else's buffer, but what I think is interesting about that testimony, Frank Summers, is somebody's advocating for residential use on this parcel. It's directly contradicted by Mr. Dirchawitz, who's put on the record and he received and filed, saying, "My home is, my home is too close to the interstate, and I can hear interstate noise because trees have been removed." So to perpetuate an issue like that by, by not changing the land use to industrial and commercial would just perpetuate an issue that shouldn't exist, and it's not appropriate to have residential uses in this location. And I think what we've come up with for the property with the IL and the comm will be exactly in line with what the staff and the county has asked operators to do.
Is up, so, thank, please, anybody else we need to hear from, other than those up here on the dais? Okay. All right, any comments from the dais or a motion?
Yes, a couple of questions. So Denise, can you, yeah, sorry. Can you confirm what could be done in EC for me?
Yeah, I'm actually going to defer that to Erica because I believe that.
But still, I want to just confirm that.
Sure, I'm going to defer that to Erica because I think that actual analysis has been done, so.
Erica, could you come up? Okay. Terry's going to come up.
Victoria Ospeitos, Planning and Development. Everything's digital these days, so if you.
Terry, that mic, mic isn't very loud, so.
Can you hear me now?
Barely.
Test.
Oh, I'm yelling.
So the Employment Center Future Land Use Classification enables, according to the comprehensive plan, corporate business park or target, targeted primary businesses or industrial uses. And the comprehensive plan actually calls for 55% to 75% of the EC flu has to be this particular intensity of land use. In addition to that, it does allow for multi, multiple family land uses, and the comprehensive plan prescribes 20% to 40% of the EC flu to be multifamily, so high-density residential. And then lastly, the EC flu also allows for support commercial and office uses. In the, the range that the comprehensive plan prescribes is 5% to 20%. Now, you have to keep in mind that office uses are also applied, can be applicable within the corporate business park general use category of the EC flu. So the EC flu currently enables non-residential development pattern at this particular location at the, around the I-75 Blanton Road interchange.
All right.
Does that answer? I'll answer.
Yeah, so this, so this, this rezoning that they're asking for is actually more restrictive than what the EC would have been in this location. Is that about, is that correct? Thank you.
It's, it's not a rezoning. It's a change in future land use currently, so it's a comprehensive plan amendment. The EC flu does have a variety of land uses that are combined within it. The IL future land use is limited to light industrial uses, so you could potentially think of things like warehouses, offices, and that sort of type of land use that can go in IL. And then the comm land use is commercial development. Within the commercial development category, you would, you would be able to do C2 zoning, for example, and generally that's going to, you know, it's going to limit itself to mostly commercial uses. However, the, via a conditional use permit, there are some residential uses that can exist in the C2 zoning industry. But the comm classification enables commercial land use specifically.
So can I, can I add to what Terry said? That's possible.
Sorry, yeah.
I'm not sure it's accurate to say that it's more restrictive. It's, it's both more restrictive and less restrictive in the sense that it's more restrictive in the sense that residential is not allowed in IL or EC or, or comm, but it's probably less restrictive in the sense that comm allows certain commercial uses that EC probably would not allow. And it's possible that IL may allow some uses that EC would not allow, but, so I'm not sure you could just generalize and say that it's more restrictive. It's, it's both more restrictive and less restrictive, if that makes sense.
Yeah, that does make sense. Yes, thank you.
By the way, Chris, while I, while I'm talking, I just want to make sure you and I are on the same page. I don't think you can vote on this item. Are we both in agreement on that?
Yeah, I was looking at that, and because it's really not increasing, well, is it changing residential density, I guess, is the question.
Well, it's, it's actually reducing resident, there is, it's removing all residential from the land use, so I believe that means you can't vote on it unless you've got a different interpretation than I do.
I mean, I always, I've always got, and again, I don't have it in front of me, David. You probably know it better than I. I kinda, I've always taken the attitude that if there's a change in density, I would vote on it, but if you're, if you think it's just an increase in density that I vote, then.
I think it's an increase.
Okay, and that's, and I don't disagree with that, because like I said, you probably know that better than I.
Yeah, I think if they're even increasing by one unit, you can vote, but the way I'm reading this amendment, it's actually removing all residential uses, so I don't, I don't think you can vote on it.
Gotcha.
Unless it affects the school site, but I don't think it does.
It does not.
All right, any other questions from the board?
Only questions I have is traffic in this area, is there going to just be the one exit, northbound, south? The traffic pattern, I, I apologize, I didn't hear the traffic expert too well because of the system we have, but I'm just curious on how many exits will, will be at this particular site? Is it just the one?
Are you referring to how many points of access onto Blanton Road?
You're going to have, no, good question. The south, that's the primary traffic pattern that will be in that area. It will be an exit at just the one location, or will it be one that's further, further north, going off I-75 towards the, the small piece of that particular property or the larger area?
There should only be, I'm not sure I'm following the question.
According to the diagram that I have here, is that there's one exit for the entire piece of property. Is that?
Well, I mean, the, the property is going to access Blanton Road, which is going to access I-75 via the interchange ramps.
Barbara, maybe you can help me on that one. Is it, is it just going to be the one exit? South end of the property?
Barbara's muted.
You need to turn your mic on, Barbara.
Yeah, that's not me. It's your staff muting me and unmuting me. Mike Razor is probably the best one to talk access and transportation, and he looks like he's unmuted, so.
Yeah, I'll just, I'll just jump in and answer the question. The, the access for this particular property will solely be via Blanton Road. Blanton Road has an interchange with I-75. No further interchanges are planned on I-75 for this project or for any other project that I'm aware of in this immediate vicinity. So does that, does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
All right. Okay, so no, no other questions? Are you a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve P-10, Chris Poole.
I'll second it, Peter Hansel.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, any further discussion? All in favor, by roll call?
Jamie Girardi?
Hi.
Michael Cox?
Hi.
Peter Hansel?
Hi.
Christopher Poole?
Hi.
And Chairman Charles Gray?
Hi.
Okay, it's back to me. Your last item on the agenda is a noted item, PDD 200640. This is for the correction of a Scrivener's error on the agenda memo that was presented to the Planning Commission on August 6th of 2020. So when we presented that agenda memo to you, inadvertently, we had excluded two parcels, so we're just correcting that Scrivener's error. The, the actual item was correctly noticed, posted, and all the visuals did include the total of the three parcels, but we inadvertently only included one parcel as opposed to the three. So this is just a noted item to correct a Scrivener's error.
All right.
And no action is required on that, just FYI.
Okay.
And that's the end of your agenda.
Having said that, are you a motion adjourned?
Motion adjourned, Chris Poole.
Second, Chris Williams.
Okay, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
All right, we're done.
I have friends who started their own YouTube channel, and a lot of people watch and comment. It's a little weird because grownups try and chat with them in private chat rooms.
Sex trafficking happens everywhere with children recruited on average at age 13. 55% of victims met their trafficker for the first time online. Traffickers friend and follow children through apps and social media, luring them into relationships before forcing them into trafficking situations.
Mom, you need to know who's talking to me online and how to protect me.
Go to the Pasco County Commission on Human Trafficking website to learn more.
Quality of customer service has been outstanding.
Beyond satisfied, absolutely beyond satisfied.
It's a completely different mindset. It's a completely different approach.
The county's been taking extra care and working together with us and a team approach.
I think that Pasco County has made strides in development of procedures and programs to where we have a relationship built with them, so when I do call, we have somebody that we know each other by name, and we have an opportunity to get in front of our problem.
So important that the customer service within any organization evolves with its customers, and I think Pasco County is doing a great job of that.
The other thing I've seen is that there's more interaction between the county staff and the community at large.
We have an opportunity to talk with people because we go to the vertical codes and the horizontal codes meeting.
Looking at something and saying, yes, I can help you, and I understand what you want to do, and, and I'm going to help you. want to do, and, and I'm going to help you do it, that makes all the difference in the world.
Listen, in the past five years, the changes that have come to the permitting department, the planning department, the zoning department are completely different. Just a breath of fresh air, it's, it's nice to walk in and see a smiling face and shake hands with someone, and, and then when you make a phone call, and they're picking up the phone, and, and you're talking to someone, and they're finding you answers, and they're getting you the answers that you want and you need, it's just, it's a great feeling.
All commissioners, all five commissioners I know very well, and they all have focused very hard on customer service.
The attitude is, is that we are your customers, and you need to be treated like a customer, and that's exactly what Don Rosenthal says.